Okay, welcome to the special meeting for study session for TOD2. Happy New Years, everybody. Do we have a staff report? No, roll calls for regular meeting. You want a roll call? No, this is a special meeting. All right, fine. Can I have a roll call, please?
Four council members are present. Councilmember Gina Papin is
Be here in a minute.
Is excused. She'll be here shortly.
So, okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. My name is Brad Meisner, and I'm the interim Community Development Director. I'm here this evening to present to you the study session for the project, The Gateway at Millbrae Station, otherwise known as TOD2. And so, I'm going to go ahead and just briefly talk a little bit about what the goals and objectives of tonight's meeting are, and a little bit about the project's scope. And then, I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to the project applicant. They have a very in-depth and detailed presentation to walk the council through the proposed project. With that, what are the objectives for tonight's meeting? Well, this is a study session. There will be no formal decision made this evening. It's purely for the council to learn much more about the project and ask detailed questions of the project applicant. So, again, we're -- the purpose tonight is to inform the council and the public on the details of the project's design, notwithstanding architecture, design elements, signage, monument signing, signage, open space, public art, building materials, and landscaping. And then, again, as I mentioned, to allow the project applicant to present the project and answer any council and any questions of the council. Just by way of quick background, back in April 10th of 2018, the development agreement was approved by council. Along with the development agreement was a site development plan, a conditional use permit for the hotel, approval of vesting tentative map, and of course, there were findings that talked about all the SEQA determinations. So, there was a full environmental impact report that was prepared, along with a statement of overriding considerations, and a mitigation monitoring report. So, that cleared all of the project from a California Environmental Quality Act perspective. Tonight, we're here to consider the design review permit, specifically in the Millbrae zoning code. Section 1005, 2500(c) requires a development review permit for all new construction, as well as ensuring that the project is consistent with the Millbrae area, stationary-specific plan, zoning. So, this evening, and this also relates to the Planning Commission as well, and we'll talk about what some of the next steps are after tonight. But both for Planning Commission and council, the design review permit really is to allow the purview to look at the architecture, building materials, colors, fenestration, signage, landscaping, and design. Back on October 15th, the project applicant did appear before the Planning Commission. They conducted a study session at that meeting. During the course of that conversation, the Planning Commission had provided many detailed comments to the project applicant, notwithstanding issues related to site design, about the architecture, many, many questions about the public art, where it's going to be located, what it's going to look like. Also, a lot of questions about what was known as the Art Walk, and I just want to clarify that now, is now being known as the Linear Paseo. And this is the area of the development that is directly adjacent to Millbrae Avenue along the front side of the building where the overpass is, which is different from the interior promenade, if you will, of the project. So, that's being called as Linear Paseo, and they're gonna take you through specifics about how that Linear Paseo will be designed, as well as the primary promenade between the buildings. And then, last but not least, also, the Planning Commission had comments on the Master Sign Program, and you'll see details on signage this evening as well. So, with after the October 15th hearing, the project team has had the opportunity to update their plans. You have them before you, and so, again, tonight is really an opportunity for, for the project team and for the public to learn more about the project, and for the council to give consideration of these updated plans and give feedback to the, to the project team. Next steps in terms of what the process are is certainly continued. Comments can come in from the public at any time, but the last two remaining formal steps would be going before the Planning Commission for a recommendation, and then final approval from, from the council. So, with that, our recommendation this evening is that the City Council conduct a study session for the consideration of the design review permit application for the Gateway at Millbrae Station project, and this is in advance of future public hearings where formal approval would be considered. So, with that, I'll certainly go ahead and turn it over to the project team, and they can take a much deeper dive into the project details.
Good evening and Happy New Year. My name's Kelly Arardi. I'm the Senior Vice President with Republic Family and Companies and one of the project executives for The Gateway at Millbrae Station. I'd first like to thank your staff for all the hard work they've done to get us to this point, and I'd also like to thank the City Council for all your hard work and time and effort and commitment to this project. We have several of our highly qualified consultants, partners, and development team members here this evening to answer any questions. A few of those members will present tonight. Chek Tang from Studio T-Square will discuss the overall project architecture. Brian Glick from HMH, and Evy Simon from Simon Bretbart Art will present landscape, streetscape, and public art for you. Mike Moore from Square PEG will present the project signage, including the city of Millbrae sign options, and the entire cohesive Master Sign Program that's before you. Also, Kimberly Kompel, Principal Planner from Bart's Real Estate Property Development Team is also here tonight, representing Bart, if you have any questions with her. Prior approvals, including the site development plan, were developed to a detail of a design review package, which you've already seen and approved. Everything here before you tonight, everything conforms to your previously approved plans.
Could you, Mr. Mayor? Could you clarify, by previously approved plans, we
Site development permit, all the resolutions that you approved, everything in here?
The concept, not necessarily.
Tonight, we're gonna focus on the following items: landscape design, plants, trees, building elevations, colors and materials, the new city sign options, public art, and project On October 15th, as Mr. Meisner referred to, we had a very productive meeting with the Planning Commission and received feedback on our submittal. In your package, you'll see refined public art pieces, refined publicly accessible open space between Millbrae Avenue and our apartment building, refined Master Sign Program to make it even more cohesive, updated new Millbrae Monument signs after receiving Planning Commission's directions and comments, further refined residential building colors and elevations. All of these revisions are complete and have been incorporated into our recent middle to your staff. The other thing that happened after all the City Council approvals is on December 5th, the Bart Board staff, the Bart staff resubmitted this entire project as approved to the Bart Board, and they approved it as it's, they approved it in the condition it is currently. So, Bart's seen what you've already approved. It's now my pleasure to announce Chek Tang from Studio T-Square to describe in more detail our project, our major project components and the overall architecture. What I will do to save time is, right after Chek comes up, we'll go into our other consultants. They'll introduce themselves, and then when we're finished, we're available to answer any questions or take any comments. Thank you.
Good evening. Chek Tang with Studio T-Square. I think with any other TOD project that's noteworthy, it really has to start with the urban design framework, and that's really the intent of our plan here, to first kind of go with the circulation kind of hierarchy that Bart has called for, mainly pedestrian first, bicycle next, shuttle buses being the third, and then cars being the least. So, when we got involved in the project, one of the main items of the site planning is really kind of creating the most important element of the project, being more pedestrian-related, being on the Garden Lane. So, you can see on the Garden Lane, that really becomes the spine of the project that ties the two gateway together, one being from Rollins Road off the 101 to the Hotel Circle, as I call it, and also to Burlingame, and also coming from Bart or Cow Train coming off of the, it's really important to kind of create that gateway coming into Millbrae as well. As you can see on the site plan, it's also important that we have relegated kind of the vehicular traffic, the bus and shuttle traffic to the east stationary road, so that that becomes a more kind of a secondary access point for vehicular traffic, as well as really allowing the garage entry to be somewhat secondary at the back, kind of at the backside of the project. And so, as you look at the Rollins Road extension, as well as Garden Lane, it really becomes the, the primary circulation, which is much more pedestrian-oriented. Again, the two gateways of the project is really important, kind of a feature and icon for the project. This, you see the rendering in front of you is the, the gateway on Rollins Road. Again, I want to emphasize, we're trying to create essentially a brand-new district, you know, so you have a very nice downtown right here, but I, as I conceive it, this is really the uptown district of Millbrae, creating a TOD transit kind of district. With this gateway, really is a gateway coming off the 101 again, and as I know it, that Burlingame's just recently passed, or in the process of passing, a general plan amendment that would create much higher density. So, we see this as a gateway for the entire city of Millbrae, but the larger areas as well, that would draw people into this district. So, you can see here, the idea of it beyond the signage element that we've been working with staff and our consultants with, that the architecture really celebrate the retail base, as well as the, the hotel kind of anchor, so that that really becomes a really vital kind of an anchor point to draw people into the, into the heart of the project. The other kind of gateway element that you see, this is a view coming off of Bart, or coming off of Cow Train, coming off the escalator, arriving in the Bart Plaza. So, this is the other arrival point, is much more pedestrian-oriented, the drop office to the left, so that you don't really see any cars kind of interfacing in this immediate area here. The really interesting element of this project is actually all the front doors for the office building lobby, as well as the lobby for the residential, all comes into this area. So, it really does activate this central spine in the Garden Lane. So, Garden Lane is what you see kind of down the middle of this, this lane that ties both of the kind of anchor points together. At the end of this terminus that you see, I'm not sure if you can see the screen or not, is really the hotel, which is kind of a portal that kind of, it becomes the terminus for the entire Garden Lane. This is a view of the Garden Lane itself and kind of middle of the Garden Lane. Again, it really highlight the fact that we've tried really hard to kind of vacate the, the cars and the buses off to the side. This is really a more pedestrian experience, it kind of right down the middle of the, the main street, with the, on the left-hand side, the central lobby for the office actually come off of there, the people who parks in that garage coming off, the retail would also access from that grand stair that you see to the left. On the right-hand side, you have the retail wrapping into the Garden Lane, as well as other community functions for the residential uses coming down to that central spine. So, besides the riders who comes off of Bart, there will be also the population that lives there, that works there, that would utilize the, these public spaces. And as Brian would come up, you would see that we're also sprinkling different public arts features and signage feature to really make this an activated space. By the way, I want to mention, one of our project, Mike and I worked on, it was early project, was Fruitvale Bart Station. It really is kind of pioneer of TOD, and what we found out is not just about the architecture, it's not just about the circulation, it's about the theming, the branding, you know, the feet, you know, all the public arts that is in the, in the project. So, we want to kind of bring that to this project as well. Architecture, what you have in the audience is actually four different architects. We, we have the privilege to represent the team in terms of kind of gluing the whole project together, gelling the whole project together from an urban design point of view, but we're also the market-rate residential architect, but we have other architects here working on hotels. So, the idea is that you have this architectural character that is, has a unity together, but also has individuality within the whole. So, that really is the intention. The first project that anchors the, the office is the office building. As you can see, is a very, very iconic building. The unique element of this office is somewhat hidden within the core, in the heart of the project, so it really is more exposed on the, I guess, the, the north and south side, facing the ECR, as well as facing the track of the station, as well as to the parking lot. So, one of the feature that we want to do on the left-hand side, you can see here, is the idea of creating this really iconic element that, you know, that would be a presence out to the Bart Station, as well as to Al Camino Real, as well as on the other side, kind of on Rollins Road, again, is a very strong feature, having a presence on, on the street. The whole, the entire building actually is surrounded by retail on the ground floor, along with the mid-block kind of a lobby, kind of atrium lobby area here, which is also the access point for the, the workers within the, the office, as well as the folks who park at this area and go use the retail. So, this really is, begins to activate kind of the core of that whole central spine in Garden Lane. Architecturally, it's, it's really about, you know, creating a very, a very vibrant base with the retail, the garage, the second-level garage, and the upper-level garage is actually shielded in a very nice quality tile material, but the, the office building itself is very iconic. What you see on the elevations here is actually the backside of the, the office building that faces the, the garage, the existing garage. As you can see, we really have no backside to any of these buildings, per se, that all four sides of every one of these buildings are actually presented in a very public and very, hopefully, aesthetic way. For the residential project, this is the market-rate project. I think one of the most important element of this project, because it's such a big frontage on Millbrae Boulevard, Millbrae Avenue, that one of the things that we really want to do is create a environment that is very livable, first for the residents. So, we create a series of these courtyards that is facing south, but at the same time, architecturally creates a lot of undulation and, you know, kind of modulations of the massing and roof line along Millbrae. So, as you come up, you know, hopefully, at a high speed, traffic hours might slow down a bit, but you come through this passageway, elevated passageway, that you have these kind of series of massing that is really appealing to you. But in addition to that, also, we have these elements that really begins to anchor the, the gateway area. This is the Rollins Road gateway area. Architecturally, we're using a whole varieties of materials to kind of create finer grains. Some elements are more iconic for the, for the elevation that is more toward the Millbrae or toward the train station is more iconic, and other areas are broken down and, and much more refined materials. I'll go through these really quickly, since we're a little short on time, but one of the big element that we have changed on the elevation, since we have worked with planning staff and our consultants, and also Planning Commission, is we actually have come through all these elevations, especially on the Rollins Road, as well as on the, the Bart Station side, and really enhance these elevations with additional detail, additional breakup of the elevation, what with more solar screens and whatnot in, in this particular elevation, as well as kind of working the fenestration to create a little bit more interest in, in the composition of the elevations here. On this elevation, this is the one that's facing the, the station, the Bart Station. The, what you see in this screen, it was labeled before, is what we presented in the original package, and I think one of the Planning Commissioner had a really good observation is that, you know, the, the building seems too stark and maybe too iconic. And so, one of the things that we've looked at is coming back with a proposed idea of kind of breaking it up, massing, and also color-wise, very similar to what we're doing on the Rollins Road elevation. So, this is the enhancement that we've done in our revisions. Colors is a whole varieties of color. Some are, on the base, there are tiles and rain screen, or, or kind of a rain screen material, as well as on the building, there's siding material, as well as plaster, and we, I won't go into that, but we can, you can definitely kind of look at the, see the varieties of materials. The affordable housing project is 80 units of affordable housing. Again, this is kind of the project that is fronting onto the existing garage, has relationship to the hotel, as well as the, the muse that goes through the, the Garden Lane. So, one of the things that we wanted to do is, again, given that this has presence both on the freeway side, as well as on the, on the Rollins Road side, what we want to do is make it a four-sided architecture. There were some questions regarding the metal siding material that was presented last time from the Planning Commission, and we have since kind of made some revisions to go to a more horizontal type of hardy plank siding, which has a lot more varieties of materials and colors, and also creating a lot more contrast to the, kind of the rest of the elevation with, with this material revision. The hotel project, I'll, I'll go through very quickly, is, is really a pivotal project in the sense that it both is a kind of icon fronting onto the freeway, the 101, but also is a portal that allows Garden Lane to be, become the terminus of Garden Lane. So, you can see in this perspective here, there's kind of a portal, a bridge across this building to create kind of a terminus to the Garden Lane here. The building is very simply organized, a series of frames with a very transparent bridge in the middle to kind of create that, that sense of portal or, or entry. Material, again, is very rich. This is elevation here is actually the, the side that's fronting the parking lot. As you can see, we really don't have a back to this building. All four sides of this building are very well-activated, very well-articulated. The major materials are siding, or rain screen siding, and also very quality kind of a tile material on the base. And with that, I will turn over to our STEAM landscape architect.
Good evening. I'm Brian Glick. I'm a Landscape Architecture Manager at HMH. I've been there going on 16 years of their 42-year existence, and I couldn't be more proud to be on this project here. Really excited to, to work on it and develop it with, with your help, with staff's help. Fantastic design team, so if I sound a little excited, it's because I am. So, I'm gonna give you a little brief overview of what I'm gonna talk about with Evy as well. So, we, this is our site. I'm gonna walk you through several of the key features landscape-wise, as you would enter from Millbrae Avenue, through Rollins Road, down Garden Lane, where it becomes this pedestrian plaza, and then it really ends on our walk that I'll walk you through in the Bart Plaza. And I think that's sort of really critical. There's certainly other areas of, of the site that I'm excited about, but from a, from, from a timing standpoint, I think those are the critical ones and I'll be able to really get you through a lot of the detail. As we walk through, you'll see that there's moments where I'm going to want to talk about art and I'm going to save that to the end so that way Evie and I can really tag-team some of the fantastic art and artists that we're, we're lucky to have brought onboard here. I think we're going to really make a fantastic, special place and that's really integral part of it. So this is that view, and Chuck showed this already, this is the view from Millbrae down Rollins. And, and what's critical here from a landscape standpoint is this is sort of that opportunity to, to make a moment happen, the view, whether you're passing by or draws you in. This could be your exit way as well, but I'm, I'm looking at it as you're entering. So our plant palette, low water use, climate adaptive, so it doesn't have to be native plant, it could be from a Mediterranean zone, could be low water use. Well, we'll really pick plants based on their hardiness and ability to do well and, and I would say a very challenging site. I think we could, we do that really well here. But these vertical palms follow the, the area-specific plan and they really make a, an architectural element, a moment happen here. I think it's super critical and you'll see them again at select locations, flanking the, the hotel, main entry, and then also in the BART Plaza. So this, this part of the design is the most fun for me. It's when I get to pick the, the pavers and the paving and the textures and the synthetic lawn and all these awesome things that I have in a materials library at my office and I get to spread everything out and really feel, feel the fabric come together. I, I couldn't be more proud of the other architects and other designers and what they've come up with here. I feel like the landscape architecture is what we're all going to feel when we're in this space. So I feel a, a big sense of responsibility to really tie these buildings and, and this whole community together. And we're really not turning our back to any, any one area of our site's surroundings, even though we've got some, you know, challenging edge conditions. So down Rollins Road, and maybe I can point to some things here up on the screen. Okay, perfect. I'm going to come back to the median barrier, but what's critical here is it starts off with its repetition of materials, so the pavement textures. And I'm, I'm going to start grabbing them over here. So these are like, these are paver samples, so I, I get to pick out this amazing color palette that works with the architecture, that we're all going to feel when we walk through the site, whether it's poured-in-place concrete or pavers delineating a special zone, or enhanced pavement bands that delineate entry points and exit points so that your eye and you know what to do as a pedestrian traveling through the, the community, it, it helps to answer those questions. What am I doing here? What is this space? Why do I feel comfortable? And part of that comfort is the plants, the other part is the site furnishings and all these colors and textures that we feel. So up here on, on the screen, you see everything from bike racks, and I'm going to spend an extra second here on this slide, and you're going to see these elements on the next couple of them as well. But it really ties through. So from the permanent seating, whether it's a poured-in-place concrete wall with a nice texture, to a wood-mounted bench on it to give it some earthiness, to the pavers and, that I just mentioned. There's bike racks that had dual use where the top of the bike rack when it's not in use has this little wooden platform. You put your arm down, put your coffee down, put your bookbag down, kind of gives it this multi-prong approach or a multi-use approach, which I think is critical to making these open spaces really thrive and allow people to do what they want in them. So that's sort of one of my, one of my challenges or, or problems to solve, excited to do so. Moving down Garden Lane, this is that central spot. This is that moment where folks come down the staircase from the parking garage, or as I like to think, this is the spot where people kind of spin around for a couple of minutes and check out the art, check out all the retail. There'll be special pavement here, awesome tree grates with an awesome texture. We're looking, looking at one right now. I'm going to get technical, but it's got this rain texture on it and it almost, if you turned it up on its side, it almost looks like rain dripping down. Really cool. It's like art in itself and I'm excited that I get to pick each one of these components out and get it into this project. So walking down the site, this is that central plaza and you can kind of see here where it switches from a vehicular and pedestrian interface zone at the turnaround or the entry to the residential garage and it walks us straight through. There's all these moments that make it feel like this lively street. One of the views or one of the inspirational images is Santana Row. So we have some of the elements from the specific plan, all of them really, taken specifically from Santana Row in this next one. Chuck mentioned that and that's at the BART Plaza, heading farther west down Garden Lane. That's, now it's just really pedestrian-focused. You'd be off your bike, you'd be walking around, maybe you lock it up and have a cup of coffee here on the edge. And pardon me, but we did not re-render this one. The synthetic lawn has looked like a mound, but we're flattening it out. That way we can have more multi-use space and you can do the farmers' markets, you can do the craft fairs, you can do a concert or a poetry reading, or you can hold, you know, a gathering of some sort. So really the, all these different flexible elements and how we arrange them is going to, you know, allow the users and the residents of not just this site that live here and work here, but everybody that comes to visit, which we really intend to have a, a, a strong showing. This is a destination, that's how I'm looking at it. And this is that planned view and you can see a lot of the same concept imagery. So the same bike racks and the same pavement, the same seating elements, trash cans, recycling cans. I think that's really important. It starts the story at one side and it continues straight through. And kind of to touch back on the plants, folks have told me in community meetings that I've attended for years here or the different meetings I've had with staff, you know, how do you, how do you pick these plants? I say pick them because in the future, there's going to be recycled water. It's the best thing for us in the future, be able to cut off our potable water needs here, switch over the irrigation system that'll be highly efficient, automated, weather sensor, and deliver water directly to the plants right where they need them in a hydrozone, which is for the plant use and plant water needs in the sun and shade exposure that it sits in. So whether it's a potted plant with a small amount of soil or it's in the ground and we've got a lot of soil there, we really figure out what that plant needs to thrive and survive. And I want to bring it into my favorite part, which is the art. So I'm going to introduce Evie Simon and step back for a second because this is amazing.
Hi, I'm Evie Simon. I'm one of the partners at Simon Bright BART Fine Arts and I'll just give you a little background on who we are. We have been operating as art consultants and have a gallery in San Francisco since 2007. And since then, we've been really fortunate to have some amazing clients, including Visa Corp. and Weebly and lots of VC firms and tech firms as well, hotels, Stanford hospitals, et cetera. And a lot of really amazing individual clients, including some of our favorites who are acquiring their one first piece of art. So any level of collector is, is exciting for us as curating an entire office building. But I will say that one of our favorite things is placing art in a public sphere because you are doing an amazing thing for an entire group of people and it's people from all walks of life that get to enjoy it. It's really an amazing thing to incorporate it into the projects like this. It's not behind a closed door, it doesn't require a ticket to entry and it truly is a gift that you're giving to the community. And so through our discussions with Republic and HMH, we brainstormed what we should do and then we did a fair amount of research on Millbrae history as well and came up with three guidelines for how we would choose these artists. One was that we really wanted to honor the history of Millbrae and also all of the transportation themes that we were seeing in Millbrae, including the Southern Pacific Railway and the number 40 streetcar and Ogden Airfield and your proximity to the airport and this major artery of transportation through the Bay Area. The second was to help create community and that would be with single visitors that are just coming to catch a, catch a BART train or people who are living there. And then the third was just to have some really compelling Bay Area artists who are very well-versed in placing public work and actually California-based artists as well. And to make sure that all of those artists were artists that we could trust to fulfill this and mostly were extremely excited once we presented this plan to them and they, their creative juices immediately started flowing of how they could help make beautiful artwork for this space. And so from there, we can walk through the process together. We have some, some physical examples that are very small from each of these artists as well as some bios from them as well, if you're interested in seeing that too.
Yeah, so one of the things you'll see on the site slide is that there's a little number or, little colored number and, and those numbers are all over the site plan. This art isn't just in one corner tucked away, it's woven throughout it from corner to corner and edge to edge. So we're feeling like this real, this space gets to celebrate art. So we're going to take us to the next slide here where we, we've selected or worked together and feel fortunate on three awesome artists.
Yeah, and that was after reviewing at least over 25 to 30 artists and coming down to this. The first artist is Ken Coleman, who's a San Francisco-based artist. He received his MFA at the San Francisco Art Institute and this is really focusing on this theme of transportation. And so as you come in over the gantry sign, you'll see that there's a BART train that's rendered in aluminum right here. And then also, oh yeah, you have a little pointer. And then at the entry of Garden Lane, there will be two sculptures flanking that entrance. We're choosing between four different transportation-themed items, one being a horse, which is obviously a very old theme of transportation, a vintage bicycle, a motorcycle and a biplane. And the fun thing about Ken Coleman is like many Bay Area residents, he came here from Detroit, so a lot of transplants here. And because he grew up in the Motor City, he has a particular interest in the materials that are used in transportation, like aluminum and exposed rivets. This is obviously a dog, but that's an example of the materials he uses.
It's a lot of fun. All right, so that is located in a couple of spots. The next artist, I think we talked about.
Oh yeah, is, yeah, Ken Coleman. So this is meant to address sort of that community aspect and Brian had talked about how we were going to come in and that's really a buzzing part of the space, that courtyard piece. And so when we presented it to John Kraswick, who's a Southern California artist with a lot of important public art actually, including a really amazing commission that was commissioned at Ground Zero in New York, he came up with this idea of interactive pillars, knowing that we were looking for community in that space. And it's a space where people can walk in and out of and really engage with the art and in doing so, engage with each other. And on these pillars, there'll be various elements on each side of them. You can see them on the, in the rendering. And then also on that will be written the words, "All great journeys are best measured in friends, not miles." And so this will be something that you'll be able to walk through and sort of consider the environment that you're in as well as just that fun community gathering place.
And just to point to the couple of locations here up on the screen, in the Garden Lane Central Plaza is where this interactive pillar is going to happen. Sorry, thank you. In the Central Plaza, the pillars, that's where you'd, you'd interface with this.
And this, sorry, this example we're passing around is just one surface of John Kraswick's. One of them will probably be that highly polished stainless steel. And that's.
Great, thank you. So that's in the Central Garden Lane Plaza. We talked about the, the gantry sign, which is number four or 1C. We've got fantastic flanking, almost matching, which won't match exactly, but transportation-themed. You can see the red dots at 1A here on the corner of Garden Lane and Rollins Road. And then we've got one more artist.
Yes, this is Linda Rainsford, another local Bay Area artist, self-taught artist with a lot of public commissions as well. And her media is signed material, both vintage and new signed material. And she's really focused on this idea of wayfinding. So as much as she loves the materiality of working with this very difficult media actually to work with, she really likes the idea of these touchstones of, of signs and the way signs can lead us on our journey and get us to where we're going. And that can come in a literal form of an actual sign or all the other ways that we find our way through our journey in life. And this will be cut sign material in all sorts of different colors and commissioned using references to Millbrae. So we have a very long list, which we'd love to get more names from people in town and Linda will do some research with that as we move along. But including historical figures of Millbrae, streets that are special in the town, buildings, anything from history to present that is significant in your community will be custom-printed on this signed material in order to really make it more of a conversation piece and something that residents can feel proud of and also talk about other people, the history.
And we have those signs woven throughout the project again. We have them in the median barrier on Rollins Road to an art screen panel at the backside of the BART Plaza. Let me show you where those are. So in the median barrier here on Rollins, number four, right in the center, we've got it at the backside of the BART Plaza on the, on the back end inside of a planting area that frames the synthetic lawn space. We are also, the spheres themselves, some, I get really excited about parking lots, but we do have one out in the parking lot and we think that's really important so that visitors from the future Bay Trail connection, as they come into the site, they know this isn't the backside of the project, this is, this is an artistic component and it really reaches far out there as well. And that really leads us to the linear passeo and, and thanks for everybody's feedback on this one and guidance. We've got art features in here and we've got sort of these fun uses with all the residents there and their pets. When, I often hear people say their, you know, if their pet passes away, they come home and the house feels empty and it's not alive and they miss their pet. So we got a lot of pets and a lot of residents coming and we've, we've provided for that. Now there's going to be two small areas, one for a smaller dog and one for a larger dog. There'll be water hole or a drinking station, there'll be pet waste stations for cleanup. And then two of the other art components that we think are really fun here. You know, as a destination, this number two or this number one that's right up against here on the building, that's this social media interactive art component. And I'm sure you all have, are on Instagram more than me and I'm going to probably use the terms incorrectly, but everybody likes to tag each other in, in social media and connect and this is a moment, an art piece that we got inspiration from. So you see the gentleman here on the, on the swing and he's just sitting on a wooden platform and this whole swing set that's up here in the upper left, that's just art on the wall. So we're thinking of a transportation-themed, like an old train where there'll be a conductor and you could sit on an old piece of luggage and there'll be a spot on the ground where everybody takes their photo at and people come to this site to take their photo and people share this site and share Millbrae's art and their moment at Millbrae and connect with each other online. We think this is a great opportunity. I once heard someone say Pokemon was the best thing for their health because now they walk around all these parks, walking, getting exercise and talking with their friends. And I said, I cannot believe I'm going to say Pokemon at a, a city council meeting, but sure, if, if that's what it takes, I'm inspired. So I think that's really a cool thing. So when you walk through this space, you've got the dog parts, you've got the mural that's interactive, you got another mural that's either in artistic, like the vertical wall that you see in the upper right, or it's got the, the train and transportation theme of the lower left. There's numerous permanent seating areas and then you can see, we tried to weave a little bit of the Linda Rainsford material into the gate. We think just a tad, a, a bit. Great. And then we are going to turn this one over to the project signage team. This one's cool too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I keep this?
Yeah. So we got eight minutes left on fellow council members. So we have eight minutes left presentation and I don't think that's enough for you to do your whole presentation. So I would recommend, we could do one or two things. We can either reschedule this or we can let it run into the next meeting, if you want to do that.
Let me run into our seven o'clock council.
Yes. Is that okay with everybody? Okay, let's do that then. We're going to have to take a break for a station break so then with the regular audience come on at seven o'clock, we'll have to do the whole roll call thing and everything again, then we'll just pick up.
Okay.
Right?
Okay. Well, thank you. My name is Mike Moore. I'm a founding partner at SquarePeg Design. Just to give you a little bit of background, explain what we do because it's always very confusing. confusing. We are, for the past 23 years, a signage and wayfinding design firm, architectural graphics, and that's our sole focus. We have a multidisciplined team of architects, graphic designers, industrial designers, et cetera, all focused on wayfinding and signage. And we have been very fortunate to be involved with a lot of major, large-scale wayfinding programs around the country, around the world. We have offices in Singapore and Dubai and in Dallas. In the Bay Area, we've been active and been involved with numerous projects from hospitality, master plan, mixed use, corporate campuses, university campuses, et cetera. And so we're very excited to be a part of this project, one, because I don't have to travel very far as I usually do, and it's nice to have a great project like this with a fantastic project team right in our backyard. So with that, I'll kind of jump right in. Our challenge with a project like this is with all the different architectural components, the landscape components, the art, and really to help to reinforce and create a sense of place, and at the same time, provide identity branding for the project, provide wayfinding and signage for all the different users, considering the different user types from residents, visitors, in this case, BART users, and all the different people that are going to interact with the space, whether they live there or visiting one time or return visitors many times. So we developed the sign program with the idea of creating a common thread that ties the project together. It relates to the architecture, the materials, the theme, the architectural theme, the region, the culture, you know, as we develop the overall concept. And so in the project slides that you see, there are a number of sign components from the gateway at Millbrae Station branding component, the identity signing, and then whether that exists at the gateway or reading, you know, further away, considering the sightlines, visibility. And then developing the overall family of sign types so that there's some relationship in the materials, and I've got some materials here that we can pass around and look at, but whether, you know, we're using real materials at the ground level for people that touch and feel, and they can feel the warmth and the quality of the material, to a similar mimicking material at the top of the building where people can't touch it, but it looks the same, you know. So coming up with how that works, considering the lighting, the illumination method, and, you know, there are obviously, and I'm sure you're aware from different projects that you've dealt with, the sense of quality that can be conveyed, how a sign is lit, whether, you know, it's face illuminated, internally illuminated, considering all those options and wanting to keep and maintain quality level. Another layer that we need to consider is the tenant signage, and that's a major component and works in parallel with the project signage. So the project signage becomes the common theme throughout or the common thread throughout the project, and the tenant signage then needs to, it needs to work architecturally, it needs to maintain a certain quality, and it also needs to represent the tenant well and provide what they need. So there's a real kind of mixture of consideration there. So in the master plan, we developed a criteria for the tenant signage that will guide the tenant signs as far as the quality of materials, how they can illuminate, the materials they can't use, the method of illumination they can't use, et cetera, to maintain that certain sense of quality and control. And then the Millbrae City Identity Sign, which has really been a fun sign element for us to look at, because, you know, we're all used to the city gateway signs and the Rotary Club logos and the different ways that different cities identify themselves. And we've had the privilege to work with a number of cities around the country in developing wayfinding sign programs and identity sign programs, and coming up with different methods of materials in a contemporary interpretation of the Millbrae Identity Sign, and using Corten, kind of that rusted Corten look, or a black and steel look in a contemporary way, in the method of illumination, integrating that into some of the architectural and landscape elements and bringing that out to the corner and creating a number of different options for consideration. We like this, that this is smaller than your current sign, because it brings together the name Millbrae and the seal at the same time, so they work much stronger together, we feel, and this is, you know, have a little more proximity to a major gateway which people will encounter and I think will perceive better than it currently is placed. So I kind of burst through that to get it all in. I guess we can go to questions?
That concludes our presentation. I'm glad I told them only 10 minutes apiece. Go ahead. We're ready for Q and A, or if you want to take a break, whatever you want to do.
Yeah, so what we're going to do is we're going to call the regular beating as soon as our technician lets us know. And then what we'll do is we'll do the ceremonial presentations, and then we'll slot you in right after that. Is that okay with the council? All right, thank you. Okay, so I'm waiting for Dave.